All this public hearing to order, please rise and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, the town clerk will read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the preliminary budget for the town of Clinton for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, including general town funds, highway funds, and related capital project funds has been filed in the town clerk's office. Town of Clinton, 1215 Center Road, Schultzville, New York, where it is available for inspection by any interested party during the town clerk's regular office hours. The town board of the town of Clinton shall hold a public hearing on said preliminary budget on Thursday, November 7th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Schultzville, New York, showing such changes, alterations, and revisions as shall have been made therein by the town board of the town of Clinton. At such hearing, any person will be heard in favor of or against the preliminary budget as compiled or for or against any particular item or items therein contained. The following are the year 2020 proposed salaries of each member of the town board, town supervisor, town clerk, town highway superintendent, town justices, and tax collector. Council persons for each $4,830. Town supervisor, $23,221. Town clerk, $28,933. Town highway superintendent, $62,057. Town justices, there were two, each at $13,643. Tax collector, $7,752. By order of the town board. You're good.
Thank you. Okay. Lost my sheet. Okay, here it is. Wrong one. I got it here someplace. Okay, I'll open the meeting for the public hearing concerning the adoption of the 2020 budget. Any comments from the floor? You know the rules. Get up, give your name, address, and talk into the microphone. Justice?
Good evening, everyone. Barbara Seilbach, town justice in the town of Clinton, along with the honorable James V. Brands. I'm here this afternoon just to follow up in regards to the last time that I was here requesting some additional hours and also for an increase for our clerks as well. So I just wanted to give you a recap. I think last time I was here, I advised that I was going to try and get us some more computerized ability to do research, which I have done, and I, the state is offering it to town justices for free. So we are now on board with LexisNexis for research, which is wonderful. Also, I'm a little bit confused as to the actual fees for the, not the fees, the salary for the court clerks. In looking at the budget again, it seems like there seems to be such a discrepancy in what different people get as a salary in terms of the job description and what they do. I think I've said it at least two or three times now that the work that the town clerks, or not the town clerks. The town clerks too. Sorry, I just wrapped up court, so I'm like missing up my words tonight. For the court clerks, their duties are astronomical and they're growing by the day, especially now with the criminal justice reform coming through. We have no idea how that is going to impact. We've been inquiring. I'm also on the New York State Magistrates Board. There's talk around the state as to what's going to happen, but nothing has really come through for us yet. They keep reassuring us that the state is going to be able to handle the influx of work and not pass it down to the towns. But time will tell, right? Stay tuned for that. But I'd just like to make one more last pitch for the court clerks. I think that they should at least, at minimum, be at, at least at 20 an hour. And also, I had a question for the town justices too, because the last budget information that came over said something about increasing us to 14.5. And then it went down, so I'm not sure what happened there. Do you know?
Yeah, it was an 8% raise originally, and then we decided that all the electeds were going to get basically a 2% raise. So it would all be, everybody got the same.
Okay.
And then as far as the court clerks and the hours?
We increased the hours.
We, well, not only we increased the hours, but we added in for that extra person that you had asked for.
Yeah, so that would be great. So when, when can I start looking into doing that?
She wants to spend the money before we give it to her.
You can look, but we only start paying in January.
All right. Well, it'd probably take that long to find somebody.
Find one and do the paperwork to get it through HR.
All right. What else did I have to report? I think that's it. I don't know. I have to talk to them about doing the hours. I know we talked about that. And I'll sit down and talk with Judge Brands too, because originally we weren't sure, you know, who was going to be in that position. So since he's working as well, we'll try and come up with a more uniform court hours to make it easier for the public to reach us. I think that's.
I think that's been a confusion with the police as well, right?
Yeah, it drives me nuts. I still don't know the schedule. But like I said, it's because both clerks work in other.
Because I've heard people, when the cops wrote out the tickets,
Yes.
they'd give out the wrong date and people would show up and.
Yes, yeah.
We see them all the time here, the town clerks in my office.
And it drives me crazy, but I don't know what the solution is other than maybe getting somebody, you know, getting this third person so that maybe we could have more uniform hours. Because like I said, some, you know, a couple of them, a couple of clerks can work two or three courts at a time, and it's impossible to try and get steady hours. So that's it. My last plug for the year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody, anybody else? Todd?
Todd Martin from the highway. In the proposed budget in 2019, you guys had a laborer's position. In the winter months, he drove a plow truck with a CDL. In the 2020 budget, you just have a laborer in there, but it's only 17 and change an hour, and there's no difference for the winter months. What's going to happen now is for the 2019 budget, November and December, you will have hopefully a driver for the truck, but after the first of the year, there's nothing budgeted for that. So you're going to be down a driver out of a big truck with a run. And then when I take over Theron's position in January, now you're going to be down two drivers in a big truck, and it's going to take longer to plow and sand the town roads. I don't know if you guys picked up on that or noticed that, but that's going to be a big difference because normally to sand the whole town, it takes between two to two and a half hours to sand it, to plow and sand it. It's almost three to three and a half hours. Now with two drivers down, now you've got to pick up those two extra runs. So it's going to be longer to pick up those runs, and it's going to be more time to plow and sand the road safely in the winter months now. That was the one thing.
But why do you say you're going to be two men down? Wouldn't you just replace yourself?
Myself, and then the position that you guys had in the 2019 budget for January, February, March, the labor position went up to MEO's position or HMEO's position, and he drove the big plow truck.
Right.
And then once the winter season was done, he went back to the laborer's position and dropped back in pay. So now you guys proposed in the 2020 budget, it's just a laborer's position, and I believe it's like $9,000 and change, but there's no difference for him to drive the big truck now in the winter months.
So he's a part-time?
The labor position was full-time.
Yeah. Theron never requested we make that special arrangement, and I don't know if the laborer has a CDL to even do that switch. I just don't know his qualifications.
All right, well, that's something you guys are going to want to think about, because like I said, that, that's one whole entire run. That's going to be minus a driver, and it's going to take longer because everybody has set runs. And once you get done with that, now you're going to have to pick up a whole another run. And then once I take over for Theron in January, then you've got to wait for my time to come off the books before I hire anybody else. Now you're talking another month, maybe month and a half, before we hire somebody, interview them, and you guys approve them. So now there's going to be two plow and sand runs you're going to be down. So like I said, you're going to be way behind now on plowing and sanding these roads.
The transition for you is immediate.
But to replace me, by the time my time comes off the books, my sick time, vacation time, personal time, excuse me, comes off the books, and then you interview the application and stuff, run the background check, line's program.
We can start the interview and everything now so that it transitions at the same time in January.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's true with all these positions. We don't start paying, but just like people on the boards and stuff like that, we interview in December. They get appointed effective January.
But you're still saying that the laborer.
You're still going to be down that, that one other spot where the labor transition to the winner and drove the truck.
Yeah, this, this is Steve is what's listed here as the laborer. I don't know if he has a CDL or what.
No, he does not.
Yeah, so he couldn't drive a truck.
No.
So, I mean, it's.
So now if you want to keep it as a laborer, then he's going to be plowing with a pickup truck, which is kind of silly and wasteful. I mean, by the time a pickup truck plows a driveway, you're going to expect him to plow an 18-foot road with an eight-foot plow. He's got to go back and forth how many times? That's more wear and tear on a pickup truck than a big four-wheel-drive truck goes down and comes back in two swipes and sands the salt behind him.
So what are you recommending?
To put that money back in there for that laborer to, for the winter months, for January, February, March that you guys had in the 2019 budget.
But then that would be just a part-time driver?
He is a laborer, spring, summer, and fall, but then in the winter months, like now, November and December, he gets paid, I think it's 21 and change an hour, and he can drive one of the big trucks.
If he has a CDL.
With a CDL.
Current laborer didn't.
She said he doesn't have a CDL.
The current laborer doesn't, but.
In the past, he did have a CDL.
The current laborer we have is, he's not working at the highway department right now.
He has a candidate.
But I'm just saying.
There is a candidate that we have that we are looking at. I've been talking with Theron and stuff, and he, he works for the town of, town of Rhinebeck or village of Rhinebeck, and he does have a big truck experience. He drives part-time. He bounces back and forth in the village and the town of Rhinebeck. He has a CDL, so he has experience in a big truck with the plow and everything else, plowing and sanding. I mean, that's something for you guys to think about.
So where are the hours missing in the winter?
For January, February, March of 2020. It's in the budget this year for November and December. But for January, February, March of next year, you're going to go down that, that truck and that driver.
And then do we, we're still stuck with a laborer?
During the spring, summer, and fall months, he goes back, works back down to the laborer's position.
The current person can't switch between the two jobs.
We have.
No, he doesn't have CDL.
The, the current person does not have a CDL. That's correct. But the one that Theron and me have in mind does have a CDL license.
But what his point is, is then what do we do with this laborer who can't switch?
He hasn't been employed for a week or so. There's, there's something going on, put it that way.
So he won't be still in.
No, he won't still be at the highway department.
We have him on it. When we need you, we'll call you.
Yes.
So then, to your question, he won't be there?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, we can increase the money like we did last year, or in this year's budget, that is, the same way.
It's budgeted for this year, November and December.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
So we just need to shift those labor hours from the winter months and
Yes.
and put it into this and add in the extra.
Yeah.
For January, February, March for the winter months.
Sort of adding about a quarter more dollars roughly in the wintertime for this year.
Oh, that sounds like we need to do that.
Well, if you look for November and December, that position, once he goes into the big truck, was 21 and change an hour. If you look at the 2019 budget.
Yeah, it again depends on how many years and all that other stuff, so I don't know.
Well, that's per the contract.
Yeah.
The union contract.
Isn't it this one that you just have at zero employees?
Yeah, that's the one that we did last year, or this year, but I zeroed it out because he didn't do it. Because nobody was listed there.
So do we zero that out and put that at one?
We, we can.
Well, that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then I've got to have a rate and all that stuff, which I'm not worried about. I just need it.
Well, look at last year's and add 2%.
Well, I don't know what the, where the guy's coming from. If you start at the very beginning as a new hire, it's down like 18 or 17.
If he starts his new hire with the con, with the, what the union contract says, it's a dollar less for the first year.
Yeah, I say I just don't have those numbers. I can do that.
Six months.
Six months. They have to prove themselves.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't know what 2269, that's what was in for this year, represents.
The 2269, that'd be the starting rate, and that'd be minus a dollar, so it'd be 20.
That is the starting rate for HMEOs? Okay, I just don't know the number by memory.
So minus a dollar on that for the first year or six months?
Yeah, it would be for January, February, March, and then when November and December rolled around next year, he'd be up at 22.
Yes.
Sorry about my voice.
And you named a lot of roads.
Too much new years?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's several roads. I mean, it's not, when you go down that run, you're not talking one or two roads. I mean, you're talking probably five, five roads or better, you know, that you're going to be minus a driver. And then some of those are pretty big roads, you know, Allen Woodley, Oak Grove, Old Hollow, Horseshoe, Sunset, you know, they're not small roads. They're, they're, I tried to do all those roads with a pickup truck with a laborer, you know, that's, you're just beating a truck for nothing.
Okay, so we take laborer out for item four, make that zero, make a one for eight temporary HMEO for the other one. At base, minus a dollar.
Yes.
I mean, I've got to put all this together, because we're trying to approve this next Tuesday, and we're not here on Monday. So we've got to work all this stuff tonight and over the weekend. So that's a change you want there?
Yes, please.
Okay. Now, does that similar change appear earlier? I have to look. Oh, that's A, okay. And then in. Okay, and then item one, we have a laborer position at one person there.
Yes.
And that's $17.10 or whatever the rate was. I mean, I'd have to look and see changed. Well, that, that rate's right. That was upgraded. Okay, so we don't change item one, we just change item four. Okay, we change that. That'll probably be third, three, third of eight. About $2,500 or $3,000 roughly. I'm just doing a quick math. That's a plus.
Okay, and the other thing I have under the, on page nine that you guys have, under the CHIPS, it's almost $100,000 less. The CHIPS program is very important to us at the highway department. That's what we use for paving the roads, oil and stone in the roads, and improvement on the roads. $100,000 less. You're basically handcuffing whoever comes into office on, on working on the roads. I mean, that's, that's a very important, the CHIPS program works where the town spends the money, but we get that money back quarterly through the state. Once you submit that paperwork with the canceled checks and the proper paperwork filled out and signed, you get that money back.
Yeah.
To pave some of these roads or even to work on some of these roads, I mean, you have down 260, that's, that's basically paving one, one road in town. I mean, one road a year. You count the number of roads we have and total lane miles of roads that we have here, roughly there is 60, almost 70 miles of roads here in the town.
Yeah, well, we put down here seven, seven miles oil and stone, 77,000 from CHIPS and pave New York under item 1A.
Yep.
That's what Theron said he was going to do.
All right, I'm just saying and asking.
So what are you suggesting?
Are you saying it's low?
That's low. Yeah, it is low. Like I said, but the 260,000, just as an example, look what it costs to do Field Road, you know, and that was not even three-quarters of a mile.
Yeah.
So.
Well, this was just oil and stone. This was not McAdam.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
But oil, oil and stone under the CHIPS program, what that means is, four years of highway schooling is how I learned all this. When you oil and stone a road, you can't touch or blacktop a road under the CHIPS program. You can't touch it for a certain number of years. You can do it in phases and still get the money back. But if you oil and stone a road, you can't touch that road now for 10 years unless you take it out of regular highway funds and not seek reimbursement from the state or anybody else.
Right.
So now, like, Field Road was done under, I believe, under the, the CHIPS program.
Chips and pave, yeah.
So now, once that's touched, you can't touch that road now for 10 years and use the CHIPS. You can use regular town funds on it, but you cannot use the CHIPS fund on that for 10 years. So anything you use for CHIPS, you can't use it. Oil and stone is a Band-Aid for a road. Oil and stone will last maybe five years, six years tops. So why, my opinion, and this is just my opinion, why waste that kind of money on a road that's only going to last you five years? If you're going to do it, you might as well do it right the first time.
But now are we using the CHIPS funds to buy vehicles?
Awesome.
So aren't we limited by the?
You can buy equipment under CHIPS program, but that should come out of the, what is it, equipment reserve that the town has, I believe, instead of using the CHIPS.
But there's not much left there because
I know.
we've been sucking it out.
That's why we need to build that up also. I, me personally, everybody has a.
Limited is because of using it to buy the vehicles.
Yes, each, each person has a different agenda, I guess, or a different way of using the CHIPS program. And after talking to several other highway superintendents and stuff, some do use the CHIPS program for equipment, and other ones that I've talked to, Mylan and a couple other ones, will not use it to buy equipment. They'd rather use the CHIPS program for, for the roads, which it was intended for, you know, for blacktop and McAdam, or however you guys want to call it.
Well, there was a plan to, every two years for a few years, to replace one of the big trucks.
Yep.
And they're like 240,000 or something like that. And so if we already did one,
Yes.
you've got another very old truck that you'll have to make that decision whether you want to continue to replace that or.
I have ideas and suggestions for that.
Right.
That I'll explain to you guys later, but yeah.
Now, the other thing is, we can leave it the way it is. We can always amend this thing.
Okay.
Move funds, because you're talking CHIPS money. So what you're doing is you're spending money that's coming from a non-tax source.
Yep.
Right.
And we'll just match it up. I, I have no problem with that, except we've got to watch that we don't overspend.
Now, there is, if, if you do it quick enough, in the sense of if you use the CHIPS money in April, you should be able to get that money back because it's quarterly. You can use it, get it back, and then put it back in the coffers and then apply again for it. You know, so you can almost use the CHIPS program twice, yeah, twice a year. If you plan it right and calculate it right, like getting all your paperwork in, your canceled checks and everything else, you can almo, almost do it twice, use the CHIPS program twice.
Four times a year, rarely.
But it's hard doing it four.
That's true, except where we ran into the problem was scheduling all of the equipment and so on. You know, you couldn't schedule it to a certain date, and by then, you're already looking two or three months down the line to get the blacktop, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all about timing, some of which we have no control over.
Well, I, me personally, I would plan months ahead of time. I wouldn't plan for next week or next month. I'd plan six months, eight months, almost a year out, you know? That's, that's my way of thinking, you know?
Well, that's good if you can get two or three times in the year, we'd benefit.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
It, just so everybody knows, in all cases, we spend town money and then we get reimbursed by the state.
Yes.
And the state reimburses us, takes about two months or three months.
Takes a long time.
Because they have a consolidated place that's, does all the processing, and everything is slow up there now because it's one organization.
So you're going to make some changes on timing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that one's, we can change. I mean, it, I put down.
Yeah, it's not a factor to the budget. It's just a matter of jockeying the money around.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got to put it as revenue, and I've got to put it as expense, and they've just got to be the same number.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to say anything at the budget? I mean, on the public hearing? Okay, what I, I got two sets of, two, two new items which I wanted to add to the budget. And I gave a handout to all the people. I just printed it up and did it today. And I got it here someplace. And that's budget questions. Here it is. Okay, the one is, PERMA came down, and we were talking about some of the activities and stuff, and they said there's a federal requirement that anyone who comes in possible contact with human bodily fluids, which are lifeguards, campers, custodians, the rec park maintenance guy, emptying the garbage cans and stuff, must be given the opportunity to get a hepatitis B immunization. And hepatitis B is three shots in a series. It takes about four months till you get the last shot. That requirement, and I gave the board here a listing of how many people, 21 people we're estimating, which comes out to be $2,000. So that's the one I've added or proposed to add.
Now, wouldn't that be covered under regular home, you know, health insurance?
If they wish to, but we can't make them do it.
It's to their benefit.
I understand, but.
If they can get it done in their own health insurance, I mean, I can't see all 21 people are going to get.
They can decline it, but we have no experience of what the pattern will be here, so I've got to be prepared for the whole thing.
You have to sign a waiver if they decline it.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, even if they do go and get it done, if they haven't done already.
People normally don't do that routinely. Did you get a hepatitis B shot?
Yeah, when I went to school.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. To go to college, they require a bunch of immunizations.
Yeah, but it's not necess, it's not necess. Yeah, no, no, but the point is, it's not a lifetime shot. You've got to get titored every so often to verify that it's still good, so.
I think it's every five years, something like that.
I, I get it through the fire department, so, I mean, I get it tighter every two.
Do you pay for your own or do they pay for it?
No, they pay for it. So, and that, about every three years, I get it done, titored. And then I see if I need it. I get it. If I don't, I wait another couple of years. So that's that one. And the other one was, came up by Fred with all this security and stuff. Our system is pretty loose in respect to outside looking at what's happening. So he's looked at other situations. In fact, if the town that he referenced before of having it being ransomed, that costs a lot of money. If they'd have done this examination, they would have probably had it cleaned up and not been attacked. Okay? So there's two forms of it. One is $4,000, which is looking at the internal systems. In other words, people coming into our internet system. And the other one is 96, $9,600, which I'm not proposing at this time, which is an internal one, which is really detailed. I'd say maybe next year, one would consider that. So, and I've given the board the words and the peep, and the information here. Now, I did a chart, and I want to just go over it quickly. It's on the second page of my letter there. I did the original preliminary budget. It had a tax rate of $2.17. And we were under capped by $26,530. I got a new taxable assessment number from our assessor like three days ago. That rate went down, and I, I told you the exact numbers, which then forced the tax rate to go up to $2.18. Obviously, it didn't affect the tax cap because there's no expenses or anything related to that. If you added only the hep B cost of 2,000, the tax rate still stayed the same, $2.18, and you just lost your tax cap. You're under it, but, you know, you lost some of that. lost some of that. Or if you only did the IT security at four thousand, the tax rate still stayed the same, and you had, uh, twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty under tax cap. If you added both of those together, which comes out six thousand, it still was under the tax rate of two dollars and eighteen cents, but your tax cap came to twenty thousand, five-thirty. So
Under.
Under, yeah. So we're still under, no matter what we did there.
You know, you gotta add in this three thousand for the salary for the, uh?
Yeah, well, I mean, I didn't have that till now.
Mm-hmm.
And three thousand, mm, I don't know if that'll bring us up or not. I'd have to, I'll run that and find out, but it, at most, it'd be another penny, if, if it did. But I don't think so. 'Cause I'm not looking at six decimal places of stuff, which you can, which is rounding, doing conventional rounding through Excel.
Yup.
So, that would be three thousand for that, or, or thereabouts.
Yeah, so now we're down to seventeen thousand, roughly?
Still under the tax cap, and we may go up a penny.
I think it should be put on the record, too, that Fred's recommendation was to do both of those assessments.
I know he did, but I talked to him about it, and I says, "We, we can't afford both of them." I know. He, he was just trying to be fully protective, but I didn't see that we had the extra nine thousand or so to flip into this. I can put it in, if anybody wishes it, but that would, uh, clearly add another penny
Yeah.
To the tax rate.
Now, when we put all this equipment, I, I don't recall, um, didn't, didn't we buy, you know, a firewall?
Oh, yeah, we got the firewalls and stuff, but this is to have somebody do a test of how good that everything is, that you have. And the other one is, the more expensive one is, actually finding out what people are doing on a computer. Are they, are they doing scam emails, or anything like that? Are they bringing programs in? I don't know what they're doing. And they're looking at all of that. That's a separate one. I didn't put that one in, okay? 'Cause that would be clearly another penny, and I thought that would be too high to put in. Uh, but if you guys want it, I mean, we'll do it. I'm just saying, but this is, uh, the first baby step on trying to get an audit of the system that we have from the external side. The internal side is pretty complicated, 'cause you gotta find out what's happening.
Well, internally, I mean, you know, if you want a real secure thing, then you gotta basically limit access to certain websites, and you gotta have a, an email server that scans for all the phishing and, and everything else, to limit someone opening up a contaminated file or hyperlinking to some
We think we have that, but
Vicious site.
We can't prove it. This is the company that'll prove it.
Like a lockout.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, they, they run test cases to see about it. So, those are the, uh, two things I had relevant. And, you know, I'll put the three thousand in whatever it comes out to be for the item four, H M E O driver. So, did you wanna go with any, or all? Well, gotta do the hep B. I mean, or it would be a violation. The Health Department will come by and ding us.
Yeah, and if the job requires it, you can't force them to go to their insurance.
No, no, if they do, they do. But people routinely don't do it unless there's a reason to do it, and lifeguards don't even think about that. So, and, you know, there's a form for a waiver and all of that stuff. So, I just got the cost from E one, emergency one in Hyde Park.
I mean, it's, it's ninety-five dollars. It's not like a, a killer. I just
No, but it's a lot of people.
My, my only comment was that I, I think that some people probably already have it, especially if they're going to school or doing other things
I, I, I don't know.
That are work-related, so I don't know if we'll, we'll need all of that money, but it's only two thousand dollars, so even if it's half, it's only a thousand dollars.
I mean, we don't spend it if they don't need it.
Right.
So it's not a pre, like a retainer or anything like that.
You could also create a little sheet that says, "Do you have it?" If you don't, you know?
Well, that's the, the waiver form.
Are you current, and if not, can you, you know, get it from your insurance, and if not, now, you know, give them options. Some people say, "I'd rather go to my own doctor."
Yeah.
You know? That's fine.
That's the waiver form, and that's the next-year thing. But we're doing the budget, and I'm trying to cover the expense so that we don't come up short, because we missed it. And, and that was just fairly recent. So, you know, so we leave the HB, the hep B in. Now, what about, do you wanna do IT security? I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I think it'll cost us a lot more if we don't.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm trying to, do everything we can. So there's consensus or agreement? Leave that in? Okay, and then the three thousand, those are the, the only other change, which is not any dollar value change I was gonna make, is in the, where we have all the wages or salaries, you know, that last sheet, I'm putting in our liens as a yearly salary number, not an hourly number, just convert it. I, I just put it there to start changing, and then, so that'll be changed there.
Seven?
Yeah, so that'll be a fixed salary there. You know, that'll be on that sheet. It's no financial change. Then, the other one that's coming up, and I think Nancy's somewhat aware of it, is, I put in here, to help out in the building inspector area, we put in the, um, what the heck it's called? Uh, I gotta find it here.
Municipal code enforcement officer?
No, well, no, I put in a, uh, different thing. Field assistant I put in, 'cause I didn't know what codes they were
Okay.
At that time. And now, we got a, a different set of names, and I wanna put a right name in there, if possible.
Well, Nancy has an answer to that.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I met with personnel, and, um, the, we don't, there's no such thing as a field person.
I know there's not. I just had to put some name there.
And originally, we had a job description that called out a, um, code enforcement officer. That's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Code enforcement officer only applies to the city of Poughkeepsie.
Yeah, I found that out.
That's to take care of all the housing that the city owns. So, the actual title is municipal code enforc-, enforcement inspector.
Yup.
That's the code, that's the title. And, um, there's a lot of requirements there that sort of mirror, I, I can give everybody a copy, by the way. I just apologize, I, I actually stapled the
Municipal code enforcement inspector.
Right. I actually stapled the second page to the first, so just look at the second page first. Um, so here's the requirements, which a lot of them are requiring zoning, uh, in, you know, understanding all the codes and so on, which will be a learning curve for somebody coming in. You can send them to school for things that they lack.
That's not the latest one.
But it really homes in on, do you have, um, experience in the building industry? Can you read blueprints? Can you read? Everybody have one? Um, so we can, we can actually take this job description and pare it down with these qualifications, and write a, a job description that we can post, okay? My only concern is, and I mentioned it to Dean, and he wasn't too enthused, is, I'm a little concerned about the hourly, um, compensation that we've got in the budget. I'm not sure for this particular job description that you're gonna find somebody that's gonna do this for fifteen, what is it, eighteen? What is, gotta find it now.
Fifteen hours for eighteen hours.
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen-seventy or something.
No, it's eighteen hours. I mean, eighteen dollars an hour
Eighteen dollars an hour.
For fifteen hours, yeah.
I'm not sure that that will
Yeah, but it's not much different than the Z E O's
Well, and I'm not su- But we can't get one there either, you know? So here's, here's what I discuss with personnel. They would, they'll search the, um, the list of qualified, um, people that have taken this civil service test. There might be about four of them. The civil service test was several years old, so these people may or may not be available, but they'll do that. They'll also put an ad out, and a search out, uh, in the local community to see if there are any people that would qualify and be interested. We can also do the newspaper ourselves, okay? And, um, we could modify the job description to a degree to help us interview anybody that wants the, you know, is interested in the job. Um, and, I've got too many papers here right now. Um, here's my yellow thing. I was concerned about the money. If we save, we're gonna leave it at that. We'll review the civil service lists. We'll do a, and I'm gonna start calling the different communities that have part-time people, and see if any of them are interested in working for us, and, for instance, Mylan.
Well, there's, there's also a, a code enforcement officers group, and they meet monthly.
Okay.
You can, you can tap into the group and see if any of them
Okay, I don't know that.
Yeah, my, my brother-in-law's a code enforcement officer for the town of Poughkeepsie, so I'll get you the information.
Okay. That, that would be super, 'cause they could do some of the work for us. Um, and, uh, so, check in with the other towns. That's pretty much it. I can't, I don't know what else to do.
Now, just, today, we just pulled up the one that you talked about, and the revised date on that one is eleven-six-nineteen, like, a day ago.
And that's current.
This is the first current, yeah.
The one we were working on, the other one, was back in eighty-seven.
Oh, no, no, but this is for this, when you're talking about and handed out.
Yup, that's the more current.
This is the more current one.
Got it right from
And it's bigger than the one you have.
What he's saying is, what you handed us is from June of oh-five, and he got a new one that was printed on Wednesday, that was updated on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, it's got a little more
Stuff in it.
There's more things than what's in this, but it's
Right, and that's the current job description.
Yeah, okay.
And it is a lot more than the one
Oh, I know.
The other one was back in, I think, eighty-seven or something like that.
Ninety-eight.
I mean, the job descriptions are not rewritten very often.
No, I know that.
So if, if Dean gives me that, I'll get on it right away. Um, we could modify this slightly, but we could start to maybe put an ad in, in paper ourselves. Uh, and if, Ray, if you give me, if you fill out a form, then
Fill out a form for what?
For personnel, so that they'll work with me. They, I've already met with them, but they said they need something, a form from you, that I'm the one that's working on the personnel stuff.
All the personnel stuff?
This personnel.
Oh, just this?
This or anything else, yes.
Well, you gotta be very careful on that. We are sending stuff all the time. Sam sends stuff all the time.
We would keep Sam, and I would work with Sam on some of this stuff.
Okay, so she does nothing on personnel without talking to you?
No, no, no.
I'm just trying to understand.
Sam will continue to do what she does, but when we get issues like this, where there are job descriptions that need to be locally modified, or something else, Sam and I would do it together. But I can't work on it officially without you giving me permission to do so.
Do I need a letter or a form?
It's a form.
Oh, I, I haven't seen one of those, okay.
It, you're talking about government. It's always a form.
I know, well, I didn't know.
So, but if you would do that, then I can work on this, all right? But it doesn't take Sam out of the, the loop.
Well, that's why I was just asking what
Yeah.
What level of participation
Okay.
Were we involved in? 'Cause we do a lot of H R stuff, you know, retirements and
Right.
Pay raises and all that stuff.
And I don't wish to be involved in that. Okay?
Didn't know.
But you can see the magnitude of this
Oh, yeah, I know. I was surprised when I saw it today, 'cause it just was printed on the sixth yesterday.
So, I guess we leave the money alone, but
I don't know what else to do.
And if, I guess if we have to revise it, because we can't find anybody, we'll do so. Maybe this group will give me a, an idea what people are paid to. The pay is just, this, the pay is not dictated to by personnel.
No.
It's a local calling.
That's right.
Everyone does their thing, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other budget stuff here? Uh, do I do one more thing here? I had to, now I gotta find it. Oh, yeah, um, Whitton here sent me an email, uh, middle or end of October. Uh, he said, "On page nine, the details didn't add up." That was a typo.
We corrected that.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that email. That's what we were talking about.
We're working on it, yeah. And then, he said, uh, this is a, at the first workshop, we agreed on two thousand dollars. This is an expense in, uh, the, uh, rec park. And I had twenty-five-hundred in here. And the reason I increased it was, we were talking about, this gives the materials needed to do the roof in the park, rec park dugouts.
Okay.
That's what it was. So, I, I just added five hundred dollars to the two thousand that we have for park
That's fine, that's good.
No, no.
Yeah, I just noticed differences, like, between the two versions, so I wanted to make sure we knew.
We had to study them. Then the other one was, an increase from forty-five thousand, and this is in the, um, Highway Department, under equip, uh, no, under, um, items, item one. And it went from forty-five-hundred to forty-nine-two-hundred. And what was added in there was an extra four-hundred-and-twenty buck, uh, four-hundred and
Four thousand.
Four thousand and two hundred dollars. This is to put power switches on the big trucks to cut the battery power to prevent fires when parked, when parked, and was required by NIMR during their safety inspection. So that's why that one went up.
That's good.
And we cleaned up the, the wording here, and where you had, that we cleaned that all up, and
Oh, yeah.
And that was incorrect. That was corrected. So, I just wanted to let everybody know what that was. It's easier to just say it now than it is to try to write another email. So, with those three things that we discussed here, four things, rather, uh, we'll retype the thing and call it an adopted budget, have it available on, um, Tuesday. We're gonna be work this weekend, try to get it all put together with all the numbers and everything else, so it's gonna be a big task. And then we can approve it then, and go forward from there.
Okay.
So, any other business here? Okay, then I make a, hearing no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all.